Welcome, everyone, to the Tuesday, September 17th, Tumwater City Council meeting. And I see we have a full audience this evening, so we will start off with roll call.
Councilmember Liad Adalhoff.
Present.
Councilmember Angela Jefferson.
Present.
Councilmember Joan Cathy.
Present.
Councilmember Eileen Swarthout.
Present.
Councilmember Michael Altazar.
Present.
Councilmember Peter Agabi.
Present.
Councilmember Kelly Von Holtz.
Present.
Mayor Debbie Sullivan.
And I am here. Join me in our salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we have a couple of special items this evening, and the first one is a proclamation for National Voter Registration Day, and Councilmember Jefferson will be reading that.
Proclamation, whereas September 17th, 2024, marks the 237th anniversary of the framing of the Constitution of the United States of America in 1787 by the Constitutional Convention in Philadelphia, Pennsylvania, and whereas the U.S. Constitution stands as a testament to Americans who have worked throughout history to protect our liberties, freedoms, and inalienable rights, and whereas each of us bear a solemn responsibility to promote the ideals in the Constitution by actively supporting and participating in our government's institutions and working together to build strong communities, and whereas Congress by joint resolution on August 2nd, 1956, requested that President Eisenhower proclaim the week, beginning September 17th and ending September 23 of each year as Constitution Week, and whereas one of the aims of Constitution Week celebration is to inform people that the Constitution is the basis for America's great heritage and the foundation for our way of life, and whereas the Sacagawea chapter of the National Society Daughters of the American Revolution was originally organized by 13 Olympia women in 1905. This local chapter is dedicated to promoting patriotism, preserving American history, and securing Americans' future through better education of our children. Now, therefore, Debbie Sullivan, Mayor of the City of Tumwater, do hereby proclaim September 15th to 23, 2024, Constitution Week, and she calls upon the people of the City of Tumwater to recognize and celebrate the importance of the Constitution of the United States, the guarantees in the Bill of Rights and the freedoms derived from those important documents by visiting the Tumwater Library during the month of September to learn more about these documents and the history of the United States of America, signed in the City of Tumwater, Washington, this 17th day of September in the year 2024, signed Debbie Sullivan, Mayor.
Thank you. I think we did a reverse. This was the voter registration, and then, but I will have the members of the Sacagawea chapter of the Daughters of America Revolution come up to the podium and feel-
Just keeps it fresh.
Yes, and go ahead and whoever would like to say a few words about, especially about the Sacagawea chapter, if anyone would like to do that, and just so everyone knows, I'm also a member of the Sacagawea chapter of the Daughters of America Revolution. So I will present the certificate.
There's plenty of room.
If anybody would like to speak, you certainly are welcome to do that. Nope.
Is it okay if we photo bomb in the back here?
Here is the proclamation. Thank you very much, and I am, we used to do pencils, but now I have pens, so I'm going to present a pen to each member, so. And thank you for coming this evening. Oh, you want to do more pictures?
Thank you, ladies.
Councilmember Jefferson, do you want to read the other proclamation also?
Of course.
National Voters Registration Week.
Proclamation, whereas registering to vote empowers eligible citizens to exercise their right to vote on election day, and whereas the City of Tumwater and Thurston County are committed to strengthening democracy by encouraging voter registration and increasing participation in all elections, and whereas civic-minded people and organizations have collaborated to establish National Voter Registration Day on September 17, 2024, and whereas the goal of the 2024 National Voter Registration Day is to create awareness of elections and motivate eligible citizens to vote in coming months, and whereas the strength of our democracy depends on the willingness of our citizens to participate by choosing the people who will lead us and by voicing their opinions on important matters that will come before the voters on Election Day. And now, therefore, Debbie Sullivan, Mayor of the City of Tumwater, do hereby proclaim September 17, 2024, National Voter Registration Day, and she encourages all eligible city of Tumwater residents to register to vote, to vote when they receive their ballot, and to encourage their neighbors to vote, signed in the City of Tumwater, Washington, and recognized on this 17th day of September in the year 2024, signed Debbie Sullivan, Mayor.
Thank you. We have Thurston County Auditor Mary Hall. If you want to say a few words, I would, that would be great.
Sure, thank you very much. So I thought the first proclamation was fascinating, so.
Thank you.
I did wonder that it was Constitution Week, so that was, that was a new learning thing for me. Thank you very much for recognizing National Voter Registration Day. You know, voting really is the cornerstone of our democracy, but you can't vote if you're not registered, and I'm proud to say that we have passed 200,000 registered voters in Thurston County, and as a county of just over 300,000, when you look at the voting age population, that's pretty darn good, and it, you know, it takes a community to do that. And voter registration, it is so easy. It has never been easier. So even if you're not 18, if you're 16 and you go in and get your driver's license, you can register to vote, and we will hold that record, but when you turn 18, you automatically get a ballot. So we have same-day voter registration. Anybody can come into our brand-new, beautiful Tumwater Voter Services Center and register up until 8:00 PM on election night. So this is the 11th year that we have celebrated National Voter Registration Day, and it's only been in existence for 12 years. So again, thank you for your support, and we're pretty proud of that. And if you find people that aren't registered, and I ask everybody you know, you would be amazed how many people will tell you, "I don't vote," or "I'm not registered." And it's very easy. They can go to votewa.gov. All they need is a driver's license, the last four are their social security number, and they can register to vote right there and then. So I'm very proud of our new voting center that we have recently opened in Tumwater. Since COVID, we've kind of been like the Where's Waldo, where's voter registration? Because we've moved around a lot, but for those of you who may be watching on TV, we are out in the Montman Industrial Park on 29th Avenue Southwest, and we just opened right before the primary election. It's a beautiful new facility, and we are happy to be partners with the City of Tumwater, and you have been fantastic to work with, so thank you.
Thank you, Mary.
So here is the proclamation, and I have to say, one year I got to work processing ballots, and that was one of the most enjoyable experiences. You learn so much, and for those who want to be more involved, you definitely, it's definitely worth your time to reach out and do that work. So here is the proclamation, and I will also present you with a pen.
Thank you, Mary.
I have a question for you. So I know where the old, the other facility was. Is it still in the same general location as the other facility? I haven't been out there for a while.
It's right across the parking lot. So the county, following COVID, bought that entire complex, so there are three warehouses there. So we've got Ballot Processing Center on one side, across the parking lot is Voter Services. So we're now calling it our Thurston County Election Center.
Very nice. And then I know the mayor has spoken about opportunity for tours. If people are interested in touring the new facility, is that something that we just reach out to the office, or how does that work?
You can go online, and we actually have a form you can fill out, and that is my favorite thing to do during elections. Most people don't have a clue of what happens to their ballot once they put it in the mail or put it in a drop box, and to watch a ballot go from being received all the way through the process of the checks and balances, it's a real eye-opener. So we encourage anybody who wants to come down for a tour. If you want to bring a group, bring a group. We try to accommodate every, every group we have, every person who wants to take a tour. And then, of course, we're always looking for political party observers to come in and just observe the process. And so if people are interested in doing that, they can just contact their local party chair.
Appreciate that. I just want to commend you too, because you've helped many times in the past when people have had questions about their ballots, and it is amazing how, how you can track and how intricate your system is, and you know exactly the handoff. And you know, somebody says, "Well, I dropped it off here," but then, you know, it's like, no, you dropped it off. How you are so exact, and I really, really appreciate that.
Exactly. I think you received a letter, right?
Yeah, yeah, that letter, so.
Yeah, so we knew the date, the time, the location of where they dropped their ballot.
So I don't think people, if people know that, then how safe it really is. I mean, how would you have any question? Because you track everything. It's right there, so I commend you on your process.
Well, thank you. I have amazing staff. They are the best of the best, and I'm bragging rights if I can take this one moment of privilege. We just went through a statewide hand recount for second and third position in Commissioner of Public Lands. We had a zero variance in Thurston County. So our results matched what our tabulators said they should be. It verifies that our tabulators are perfect, and the visual inspection of our staff, which Mayor, I believe that's what you did out there, was spot on. And everybody was so nervous going into this, because it really does validate or invalidate your systems. So I was very proud of our systems and our staff. It was, it was a great experience. I love them, but my staff, I think, in the end, had fun.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right, next item is public comment, and do we have anyone online signed up?
We have one.
Okay.
Talana Reed.
And it's three minutes for public comment.
Got it. Thank you so much. Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. My name is Talana Reed, and I live in East Olympia. While I live in Olympia, I'm here tonight because I work with individuals and families who live in Tumwater. I shop in Tumwater. I volunteer a lot of my free time in Tumwater, and through my employment, I've supported several tenants to secure safe and reasonably-priced housing in Tumwater. I partner with many providers and organizations in Tumwater, and I care about the health and safety of residents in Tumwater. I want to thank you all for the work you've done to increase tenant protections for Tumwater renters. The rental registry program is an awesome way to increase accountability and build a bridge between tenants and landlords, so thank you for that work. But the main reason I'm here speaking tonight is to express the importance of climate action. Tumwater residents and businesses need more money spent on climate resiliency, adaptation, and mitigation. There's one person staffed with the city to work on climate. That's not enough. There has to be an emergency management plan in this county for smoke, wildfire, and heat events, flooding, et cetera. Your residents, especially those who are seniors, low-income, black and brown, and unhoused, need more from the city. I believe that you all want your residents to be healthy and thrive in Tumwater, and that's going to take a greater commitment from this leadership. Climate change is happening, and I'm asking you all to fully invest in the health and safety of all of your residents and do more to ensure that our unhoused community members have resources during extreme heat waves so that our seniors and low-income residents have cooling units in their homes, and so that black and brown residents are able to equitably access resources. Investing in climate action work means you all will prioritize staffing and emergency management planning during the budget process. If you all increase staffing and make resources available to those tenants who are underserved and overrepresented, that's just a start to show your commitment to the work, and it's an extension of the work that you've done already for protecting tenants. I leave you with these questions. What will the city do to ensure that resource, that the resources meet the demands of climate, of the climate crisis? And does the city plan to expand climate staffing between now and 2025? Thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right, for those in council, is that all that was registered online? Was there anyone else online? Okay, for those in council chambers, first person is Pamela Hanson. Come to the podium, name and address for the record.
Good evening, City Council, Mayor, everyone. My name is Pamela Hanson, and my post office box is 14521, Tumwater. I would like to start off by saying congratulations to our Washington State for having photo ID. I did spend some time a few years ago now helping some people in Michigan that wanted to require photo ID to vote, and the other side made a constitutional amendment and won the argument, so they don't require photo ID to vote. So congratulations to Washington State. I commented about the flock cameras when it was brought up at City Council. It's probably about two months ago, I'm not sure, and one of the questions was litigation. That is probably further away now than that comment was back then, because I just saw on the phone news that FedEx is now using flock cameras. So it is in the commercial market, not just homeowners' associations that I had read after that, before that, and after the meeting. So I just wanted to let City Council know that, that if somebody wanted to sue for their privacy, there's a lot more out there than just law enforcement using flock cameras. I also spent some time YouTube-ing and resting, and I came across one YouTuber that uses all the flashy things and gets 3 million views on one video that had to do with my new hero, my new hero, all the way in Florida, the Lee County Sheriff. He's bigger and louder than Sheriff Grady Judd. So he uses seizure laws to fund his police department, his sheriff's department. And sheriff's departments are different than local police departments. I realize that. Local police department, it has been described before, and correct me if I'm wrong, they serve the government, but a sheriff is elected and serves the people. So there's probably varying opinions about that, but I would like to see if Tumwater isn't allowed to use seizure laws that they could more often to fund the police department. More specifically, when I was in Alaska, there was a very mean female drug dealer that the federal government busted, and they seized her wedding shop and flew it to the Lower 48 and had it auctioned. That wasn't it, but thank you, and that kind of, I'll let you know if you want to know who that YouTuber is. They also, he also caught video in Seattle of fentanyl being given away, given away on camera. So it's less, not just less than 40 cents, it's given away, and there were 12 million views of that video.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next person is Dave Nacandry.
Mayors, members of the council, Dave Nacandry, old Tumwater Hill. I was here a couple of weeks ago testifying or offering commentary on another subject, but we heard, or you heard, I was here to public comment, as we did tonight, regarding climate change and the push to electrify our entire system of living. I always feel it's incumbent to state, restate, that I do believe climate change is real. My concern and hesitations regard supposed climate change solutions, so I just want to offer that. So this push to all electrification is straining our grid and our pocketbooks. I find it curious, if everything's okay with the system, it's curious that my wife or I get a push notification from Puget Sound Energy about once every two weeks to do some or other, another, a household function at some other time of the day, clearly in order to prevent the strain on the grid and the supply of power. Yet, we're going to put more and more demand onto the system. On the other hand, the reliability of the grid's coming into question. The report of Los Angeles, the Los Angeles Times reported recently, is having repeated brownouts because of surges. It's like, it's like, you keep loading, if you put several plugs in one outlet, you're going to blow the circuit, and that's really what we're doing in a national sense by putting more devices onto one energy system rather than a multi-layered diversified energy system. So why are we getting the surges in the power system? Because solar and wind, unlike hydro, natural gas, and nuclear power, they don't produce energy at a constant power, at a steady frequency, 60 cycles per second. That's why it's called alternating current. The current is alternating. The mainframe systems that we all grew up with and have become accustomed to and form our standard of living are entirely reliable, but not only are we putting more devices and uses onto the system, we're switching to more, to less reliable sources of energy. So, and as for the expense side of this equation, in my 30 seconds that remain, we're seeing the utility companies across the country are building these industrial-scale battery reservoirs in order to regularize the cycling of the power that I was just referring to. They're being built all over the country. They cost 10 times the amount of money that it would cost to build a natural gas power plant, and they're also prone to catching fire. So just thought I'd offer contrary perspective, since you're on the repeated end of pitches from the other side. I thought I'd diversify my portfolio away from oak trees and historic road signs and go back to my usual formula. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right, is there anyone else who has not signed up? Those were the only ones signed up. You can come to the podium, state your name and address in three minutes.
My name's Ryan Reynolds. Live at 9020 Blomberg Street, Southwest. I'm current president of Tumwater Chamber, and just wanted to come tonight to say thank you to several councilpeople that were, and the mayor, that were at our event for something that's a huge opportunity for the city, for the school district, for the businesses, and that's creation of the new Tumwater Visitor and Tourist Center in the Fred Meyer parking lot. And there's a lot of real neat things going on right now, opportunities for the kids, and a new vision that we're trying to put out there, bringing the kids with focus on retention in the community, making sure that kids have and are aware that local business owners, the leaders, see them as mentors, and utilizing them as being involved in this tourism and visitor's center, and also offering opportunity for local businesses to advertise and do things there as well. So in conjunction with the Chamber, we have this going forward. Wanted to let people know there's another opportunity to learn about it tomorrow at Forelli's Pizza at noon, and then again, a couple more times coming up over the next three to four weeks, and we'll be advertising those as well. So please stay involved. This is a great collaboration with the city and the school district and everybody here in Tumwater, so thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak? All right, with that, we will move now to the consent calendar. And do I have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
I move that we approve.
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Jefferson, seconded by Councilmember Swarthout. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, nay. All right, with that, we have approved minutes for a City Council work session for July 23, 2024, approved minutes for the City Council work session of August 27, 2024, approval of the minutes for the City Council meeting of September 3, 2024, payment vouchers, grant agreement with the Department of Ecology for Pioneer Park Restoration Project Amendment 1, advisory board appointment of Carissa Harvin, I hopefully said that name right, to the Barnes Lake Management District Steering Committee, and I believe, I believe, Carissa, you're here this evening, and I will have you speak in just a moment. And then reappointment for Kathy Peterson, Cecil Weaver, and Judith Loft, also to the Barnes Lake Management District Steering Committee, so welcome. And if you, I'm putting you on the spot, and I almost apologize. If you would like to just say, come to the podium and say a couple words about what, why you're interested in this and, and being involved.
Hi, my name is Carissa Harvin, and I was born and raised in Olympia my whole life, and I bought my own property at Barnes Lake in 2017, so I'm very familiar with the lake, and I've had other people in regard to more of this committee, Tom Sparks being one of them, who was constantly pitched trying to get some help, and so last year, I was like, I think it's, it's time to help and invest more into more of the community I live in and help with the lake for this year committee, so.
Thank you. So welcome, and here is a pen. Thank you for your service. We look forward to more years of you volunteering. All right, next item is the, is under council considerations, and it's the agreement for the transfer of interest of brewery assets with the City of Lacey, and that came from the Public Works Committee, and Dan Smith will be presenting.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council. As you noted, this is a recommendation for consideration by the Public Works Committee. We presented to you a couple of weeks back, and rightly so. This is a major milestone in the continuation of this project that began over 15 years ago, believe it or not. A way back in 2006, the original brewery-wellfield partnership was formed with the cities of Lacey, Olympia, and Tumwater. And while those proceedings, you know, the condemnation proceedings took a little bit of time to sort out, and they were finalized by 2009, that's when the real work for the partnership began. Started having a number of different meetings to talk about what was actually out there, what did the city, what did the partnership acquire through that condemnation proceeding? what did the city, what did the partnership acquire through that condemnation proceedings, which was all basically all of the infrastructure, a few parcels of land, a number of wells and some water rights. So the, the journey so far has been about how do we best put those water rights to use for the collective partnership? In two thousand eleven, we hired RH Two to help support us in that, in that effort. The phase one, as you can see, began in two thousand thirteen, which was looking at that, that first, first question. What did we acquire? Was looking at the aquifer, the infrastructure that was, that was acquired through that partnership and through those condemnation proceedings. And, and over the next ten years, really worked through what we had, how are we going to use it, what a partnership could look like? It, you know, ten years of negotiations around planning, some more, some more analysis, some more negotiations, back to some more planning. With every iteration, with every finding of things, and kind of uncovering of a different issue, it required us all to kind of go back to the table and kind of look at how best to make this partnership work. The last phase up there, MOU and wellfield design, as we started to kind of look into that, into that world, which would have brought us to an actual wellfield design and with infrastructure and an operating agreement with the, with the partnership about, basically, how would the partnership be structured in its operation and use of that water? Phase three has yet to be completed because prior to that, the City of Lacey determined they had a different approach toward utilizing or developing water in their jurisdiction. And so we started evaluating, what, what would it look like if one of the partners in the partnership wanted to ensure to transfer that agreement or those water rights to one or more of the other partners within the partnership? And so working with the Department of Ecology and working with the partners, we came up with, with a memorandum of, of agreement for the transfer of assets agreement, which city council saw in two thousand twenty-two. Following that, and following the process and the procedure outlined within that agreement, in two thousand twenty-three, late last year, the City of Lacey provided the city or the partnership with the notice to withdraw from the partnership, allocating the water rights and all of the assets and liabilities to one of, or more of the other partners. In there, the City of Olympia did not want to take on any of that, any of that, any of those assets or liabilities. They deferred to the City of Tom Water, in which case we said, yes, we were definitely interested, and brought us to providing evaluation and understanding the considerations for the City of Lacey, you know, for the agreement between the City of Lacey and the City of Tom Water. So part of that was, what was the, what is the water rights worth and what is the property worth? The same valuation, the same assessment that underwent during the condemnation proceedings. We used the same vendors for, for that, for those valuations, for both the water rights and the property. And through that, just as, just kind of an aside, the water rights that we would be acquiring for this, under this agreement, is enough to serve about thirty-two hundred residential units. And so each, each partner has about thirty-two hundred residential units tied up within these water rights. So the City of Tom Water would increase to sixty-four hundred. As I mentioned, this agreement transfers both the assets and the liabilities. So not only does the city get the water, get the water rights, it also is responsible for Lacey's share of well decommissioning, infrastructure removal, the storage tank removal or modification, depending on how its, its ultimate use is determined, and any of the planning and administrative and regulatory processes that the partnership would have to go to to fully utilize those water rights. And so with the execution of this agreement, the City of Tom Water is really responsible for two-thirds of the partnership. City of Olympia would be remaining with one-third of that partnership. Late last year, we brought forward this to city council for consideration of the parameters around what the negotiation and the, and the process could look like. And since then, we've worked with the City of Lacey, again, to finalize the, the valuations and to provide an, an offer to the City of, the City of Lacey of two point four million, four hundred and sixty-one dollars. The conditions outlined in the transfer of assets agreement assumes that the valuations provided through that process would be accepted by both parties, that the city, the transferring city would issue to the city, the acquiring city, a right to use the, in perpetuity certificate. This recognizes that, basically, the transferring city would still retain ownership until those rights are put to full beneficial use. The administrative process, the Department of Ecology, basically utilizes to make sure that those water, that that water that's been provided in a permit can, can become certificated once the full amount of that water has been put to full beneficial use, which means the volume of that water is fully into the pipes of the city's water system and utilized by our customers. Once that happens, once the, the full beneficial use is, is attained, City of Lacey would issue a quitclaim deed, providing the full ownership for those water rights. The reason for the two-step process, again, is, is to make sure that, that those water rights are being put, put to full beneficial use. However, the City of Tom Water could not acquire and utilize these water rights without some level of, of, of ownership, so to speak, in perpetuity, hence the right to use that water in perpetuity. We could not return this water right because development and other interests would be predicated upon that water being available here in Tom Water. And so once those full, once the, again, once the, the full beneficial has been attained, the quitclaim deed would be issued to the City of Tom Water, and the overall conditions of the agreement would be met. We anticipate, if all goes well, that we would have full beneficial use by two thousand twenty-eight, or twenty thousand twenty-eight, twenty twenty-eight, and then, or sometime thereafter, once that water is fully used. So the next steps, really, once we execute this agreement with the City of Lacey, is to complete that phase three, working on a memorandum of understanding with the City of Olympia, kind of outline those pieces of the operational, the ownership, and the operating needs of, of the partnership at that point. Basically, who's operating the facility, who's maintaining the facility? What does it look like for the City of Olympia to be receiving water from the City of Tom Water? Those are a number of various management alternatives that we need to kind of still sort out with the City of Olympia. And then undertake the wellfield design and have some test wells commissioned.
So I have a question, Dan.
Sure.
Since they're one-third, are we going to give them one-third of the water? How do we measure that?
So volumetrically, yes, they would get one-third of the water when they're ready to utilize that water. What we are anticipating at this point with this, this contract package that we already have with RH Two Engineering, they've been our partner all along. They've been a partner with the partnership all along. The next step for us really is to look at drilling new wells. Once that happens, then the, the intention for us right now is to drill wells enough to produce the first two increments of water, meaning the City of Olympia does not need that water today. So they're not looking to access that water. So if we were to, to drill those first two elements today, the City of Olympia doesn't need that water. However, they could ask us for that water at some point in the future. Again, one of the pieces that we would be trying to sort out through that memorandum of understanding with Olympia about what's the timing look like? So that way, we could be strategizing. We could be, as we're designing production facilities, treatment facilities, things like that, be thinking about packaging that in such a way that Olympia could come on fairly easily at some point in the future. You know, and, you know, for, for, just a way of illustrating it, let's say each increment of water, each one of the partnerships of water, it's, it's just for argument's sake, a million gallons for each partner. Treatment systems could be packaged so that each million gallons would have its own package, right? And the water would kind of get treated as that moves through that train, that treatment train. And so we would design these facilities to be able to address that need, that upcoming need. And, you know, as we, as we, before we even get to the design of the facilities, we, we just, we work with Olympia to develop the memorandum of understanding. That'll help us understand what we would need, how we would need to design those treatment facilities, production and treatment facilities, when, you know, to a time that would meet Olympia's needs.
Okay, thank you.
We are hoping to have the, the bid package out next month. There might be a slight delay in that, just from, we're still kind of working some things out with our, our contractor. However, we anticipate either late this year, early part of next year, we'll have drill rigs onsite, beginning to drill a number of test wells so we can determine where the best points of withdrawal for that water will be. At that same time, we'll be working with the City of Olympia. Have a meeting coming up in the next week or so. The City of Olympia to start talking about what that MOU looks like with them. So over the, over the course of the next year or so, we're really looking to install those wells, do some water quality testing, determine what kind of treatment needs that we're going to need for the, for the, for the exact water that we're going to be pulling out of the aquifer, start designing the, the facilities, the treatment and production facilities, work with Department of Health to get the, the systems permitted, and eventually can design and construct. In an ideal world, we'd be designing, or moving to construction late next year. It's more likely twenty-six, twenty-seven, we'll be in that design or that construction phase. And that is the basic overview of where we are today. And I think for you, is that recommended action, is recommended city council authorize the mayor to sign the brewery asset transfer agreement with the City of Lacey, permanently acquire Lacey's brewery wellfield assets, water rights, infrastructure and associated liabilities?
Councilmember Altouzer, did you have a question?
Yeah, I have two quick questions. So we essentially have to get to full use, and that's sort of when the next step in the actual transfer would occur. And in the contract, it looks like we have to do that, like, like, let's say hypothetically, twenty twenty-six and twenty twenty to twenty twenty-eight don't materialize. It looks like we have until twenty forty-one to actually do that. And in the case where that wouldn't happen, then Lacey would still retain the rights. Is that right?
No, so the city would still retain the rights. Once we acquire, we would get the ownership, the full ownership, once that is put to full beneficial use. And you're right, that the Department of Ecology extended our timeline to put that together until twenty forty-one. So we got a twenty-year extension from the Department of Ecology over the last, you know, two years to negotiate that with them. And that gives us a lot of time to be able to put that to full beneficial use. And so, you know, even if Ecology was to issue us another extension, which would, I think, at this point be unnecessary, but you never know in, in the rights of, in the world of water production, what might happen. But should that, that case maybe, we would still apply that extension to the agreement with the, the department or with the City of Lacey. The City of Lacey's agreement starts with the, the execution of this, that they issue us that right to use in perpetuity. Whatever that perpetuity means, we can't, again, give back those water rights because our, our community would be dependent upon those water rights.
Okay, got it. And my other question, which we talked about in the committee, but just for folks watching on TV who may have not tuned in for that. So the cost of, of the two point four million dollars, that assessment is reflective of some of the challenges associated with that property, both the railroad going through there, the egress and ingress into the property, the hills on the other side of it, like, those are all factored into that price, correct?
Correct. So price, the property valuation, just like any other property valuation, and then the liabilities that, you know, the partnership needed to consider were part of that agreement as well. And so recognizing, you know, not only just the assets the city has acquired, but there are liabilities and there are contractual adjustments for that, was all included within that two point four million dollar price.
Okay. I have one, one more. Bear with me. It's sort of a follow-up to Councilmember Jefferson's question. So if we are largely paying the two point four million dollars, that expands the total amount of water that comes out. So the other partners' share, the one-third, also increases because the total increases? So when we do the MOU and things like that, is there also then discussion of essentially like a latecomers fee with Olympia? Like, how do they factor? They also seem to benefit by us procuring additional water resources and doing the work of drilling the wells. So how do we sort of become square with Olympia in the future?
I understand your question correctly. Olympia's share does not change with the, with the city's acquisition of the one-third. So the city's percentage doubles. City of Tom Water gets double the amount of water rights for the total amount that was acquired. So when the, when the, when the former brewery, All American Water Bottling Company's water rights were parsed, it was parsed into three. City of Lacey got one share, Tom Water got one share, and Olympia got one share. We are acquiring, the City of Tom Water is acquiring Lacey's share. And so now theoretically, for the partnership, we have two shares, and Olympia has one share.
Okay, so it's, it's not a zero sum where the aggregate has increased. It's a, okay, I understand. Thank you.
Any other question? All right. Do I hear a motion?
Oh, yes, Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to approve and authorize the mayor to sign the brewery asset transfer agreement with the City of Lacey to permanently acquire Lacey's brewery wellfield assets, including water rights, infrastructure, and associated liabilities of the brewery wellfield.
And I second that motion.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Swarthout, seconded by Councilmember Jefferson. Any discussion on the motion?
I'll have a comment.
Councilmember Altouzer.
I'll just be very brief. I just think this is a really, really important strategic step for our future. As we know, you know, climate change is upon us. Securing water rights is just an incredibly important asset for us to be able to do. I'm also really thankful for the City of Lacey for working with us on it over the years as well so that we could get here on this. I'm excited to vote in support for it. Thanks.
All right. Any other comments or questions? All right, with that, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries unanimous. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is inter-agency agreement with the Washington Department of Commerce for the State Home Electrification and Appliance Rebate Program. And.
Thank you. Good evening.
Alyssa will be sending this off, so.
Oops. Good evening, Mayor and council. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
Okay. I'm here. Like the mayor said, this is an inter-agency agreement with Department of Commerce for the Home Electrification and Appliances Rebate Program, which has the acronym of HIER. We are doing this because in the Thurston Climate Mitigation Plan, we have Strategy B Six, which is convert to cleaner fuel sources. And buildings and energy make up fifty-four point two percent of our Thurston County greenhouse gas emissions within our boundaries. Within that, residential buildings is a large portion. Here is a table from our two thousand twenty-two community-wide greenhouse gas emission inventory, specifically looking at residential energy. You can see the two thousand fifteen usage and the two thousand twenty usage, as well as the emissions from both years. Two thousand fifteen is our baseline, and you can see that there was a thirty-one percent increase in the emissions related to natural gas since we have our baseline year. So this is a kind of an emission that is, seems to be growing and is very harmful to the atmosphere and humans and other organisms that share this planet. Hence, our strategy to convert to cleaner fuel sources. One of the three regional initiatives that the Thurston Climate Mitigation Collaborative is working on this year is first called the EEE Campaign, or the Residential Energy Efficiency and Electrification Campaign. Now we're branding it as Energize Thurston to just be cooler and to jive with the Energize Olympia program. It has a number of different parts, one of which is the web-based information hub, which I'm proud to say is completed. So you can go to www.wa.switcheson.org and learn a lot about how to electrify your home. Even has assistance to work you through the steps of, how do I do this? Where are my contractors? What are the incentives? It's a one-stop shop. And then we have another portion, which is the local incentives, which the HIER funding is helping to support. So that's financial incentives to help people electrify their appliances in their homes. Also, outreach and marketing campaign will also be supported by the HIER funding. And the last portion of this is the Advisory Support Service, which is coming soon. The organization that did this has since been bought and doesn't want to do it anymore. So we're getting creative to try and figure out customer service opportunities to help people hold their hand through the process. This grant is funded by the Washington Climate Commitment Act. It is in the amount of four hundred and seventy-seven thousand, five hundred and forty dollars. There is no match required, and we need to be swift in spending all of this money because we have to spend everything by June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. The funding will cover a number of different home appliance electrification upgrades, including heat pump water heater, air source or ground source heat pump for space conditioning, induction kitchen equipment, like ranges, heat pump clothes dryer, electrical service and panel upgrades needed for the installation of those appliances, any wiring that's needed for the installation of those appliances, education and outreach and program administration. There are some very specific things that we need to stay within in terms of requirements for the appliances, like it needs to be Energy Star, it needs to be cold climate air source heat pumps. Don't worry, we got this. We'll follow all the requirements and spend the money quickly and efficiently, hopefully. The people that will benefit from this grant and this associated program, the Energize Thurston, will primarily be, will be only, mostly, low-income and moderate-income residents of, of Tom Water. Thurston County, Olympia, and Lacey, and even Tonino also got funding, and will be working on this regional program. It's fun, Tonino is not part of the TCMC, but they're joining for us for this campaign, which is great. So here's just a quick table to illuminate what eighty to one hundred and twenty percent of area median income means in our community. The program design, the number one priority will to do, will be to do turnkey installations for home electrification for low- and moderate-income residents. That's up to one hundred and twenty percent area median income. We're going to reach out to Tom Water Lifeline customers first because they're already income-qualified, and we know that they work with the city easily. So we'll be reaching out to them as a first line of interest. It'll be open to anyone in our community that meets those income qualifications. However, almost five hundred thousand dollars goes fast when it comes to electrifying an entire home. So we hope to do. goes fast when it comes to electrifying an entire home. So we hope to do between 20 and 40 Tom Water homes with this funding. And that would be full home electrification of replacing furnaces with heat pumps, heat pump hot water heaters and stoves and all the wiring and panel upgrades that might be needed for that. Our number two priority is to provide group purchase discounted pricing opportunities for all Tom Water residents, and that can be for anyone of any income. We'll work with installers to get competitive pricing, and this is something that Energize Olympia does as well, so that people of any income will be able to get some sort of discount, then pair that with utility incentives, with federal incentives, and we'll give them that information to make sure that they're using all the different benefits that they can. Like I said, this is a model off of Energize Olympia. There are also a number of different programs throughout the country that do this similar work. In some places, they add solar as well and battery storage, but the grant funding doesn't cover that. So we're limited to the wonderful work that I'm excited to take on with the home appliances. So in order for Tom Water resident to benefit from this program, they would sign up and attend a program workshop to learn about what the program is, what the appliances are, answer questions. There's a lot of demystification to happen around a lot of these appliances. They'll then submit a program application and specify that the household is interested in receiving subsidized installation. Program staff will verify the site eligibility, that they live in Tom Water, their address is in Tom Water, and request income eligibility information and verify that. We'll then provide the participant with a status update and notify the installer that the participant is ready to schedule a site assessment. They'll receive the installation, which is something that they won't have to manage the contractor for that. It'll be kind of a one stop shop. They come in, all of that stuff is worked on for them. We may have more than one installer for them to choose from. If they prefer one company over another, we'll do some competitive solicitation for that. Yes?
Hold on. Councilmember Jefferson.
Yes, our seniors on limited income can really use this. Is there a plan to reach out to them that's not social media? Because a lot of them are on social media.
Yes, we have 191 residents who are on our Lifeline program, and that is for income limited seniors and disabilities. So we already plan on targeting them first and foremost. That would be direct mail or calling them or stopping by their home to tell them about the program and encourage them to apply.
All right, excellent. Thank you.
Councilmember Dahl.
Thank you. Alyssa, just speaking of that, since you're on the slide, one of the things that we have experienced some council members is the trust aspect with seniors, right? And so when it says sign up and attend, how realistic is that for some of our seniors who have mobility challenges or auditory or visual? So is there a way with councilmember Jefferson's about like Senior Services for South Sound or Rebuilding Together Thurston County who are already going out there and building, is there a way to partner and collaborate with people who have already built their trust to that touch point with them?
Yes, we intend on doing that. We've been doing partner interviews and focus groups for the different regional initiatives, including talking to Seniors for South Sound. I also table at the food bank regularly where we have a lot of disabled seniors or seniors of Tom Water that I've built relationships with. So I'm pleased with that. But yeah, we'll be trying every avenue that we can and whatever location that we'll be having the workshops. And we might have one that's like on demand, a video that we can bring to them for them to watch as well. But we'll make sure it's at an accessible location and that any accessibility needs are met.
That's awesome. Like even with the Meals on Wheels, right? If senior services could put something with that delivery.
Yes.
That would be awesome.
Maybe a poster at the senior center.
That's a great idea.
Thank you, Alyssa.
The last step of this is after the residents receive their installation, the installer will submit the invoice to us and we'll pay them out of the HEAR funds. We may or may not work with an organization like Habitat for Humanity for kind of simplifying the process and having one point of contact. And Habitat for Humanity and the Energize Olympia program, they've been able to do critical home repairs while they're in doing this as well. So there could be additional home repairs for seniors and low income residents as well. So the recommended action for this is for city council to authorize the mayor to sign the interagency agreement with Washington Department of Commerce for State Home Electrification and Appliance Rebates Program. And I'm happy to take any more questions that you might have.
All right, councilmember Alt hauser.
Thanks. You know, this is funded through the Climate Commitment Act. There's an initiative that would repeal the Climate Commitment Act. If that initiative passes, would that have an effect upon this iteration of the program where we have funding until June 30th, 2025?
We have funding until June 30th, 2025. Any future additional funding to have this as be more than one year program, that, that is under threat by that initiative.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Kathy.
Thank you, Mayor. I may have missed this through, or whatever, does the person in the home, does it, what happens if it's a rental? Does it change?
They would definitely need authorization from the landlord as a property owner. But I think in the case of Energize Olympia and other programs throughout the country, it is able to be done in a rental property. The income qualification would need to be figured out. I think that would be primarily for the property owner, as it's an improvement to their property. So there's some things that we still need to figure out for sure. But we aren't planning on launching the program until January, so we have a little bit of time to, to work out those particular details.
I think that's a, I think that's a good one to look at. You know, if, because a lot of, a lot of people are in, that are in need of this program are in rentals. And, you know, just the cooperation of landlords necessary might take some conversation around. So just a heads up.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, and I would entertain a motion.
I move to approve and authorize the mayor to sign the interagency agreement with Washington Department of Commerce for State Home Electrification and Appliance Rebates Program.
I will second.
All right, it's been moved by councilmember Dahlhoff, seconded by councilmember Von Holtz. Any discussion on the motion? With that, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion carries unanimous. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Alyssa.
Thank you.
All right, so now we are to committee reports. And the first report is Public Health and Safety, councilmember Agabi.
Thank you, Mayor. So the Public Health and Safety Committee met on the 10th. On our agenda, there's the two main items. One was the survey that was done by the police, our police department. The other one was the fire department staffing. And we chose to tackle the police survey agenda first because that has been a lot of, need to know more information about that. So that, that kind of took us a while. So to the best of my knowledge, I think we have, we've agreed that that, that, that issue has been settled. And then one of the other items that came about during our discussion, and I'm not sure if every one of us received an email from councilmember Leira Dahlhoff on Sunday, I believe, Sunday, the 10th of this month, thereabouts. And that email indicated that while she was out working at Dog Up on around 78 and Lerac Road, a white truck came by and that driver hears some racial epithet at her. So given what, given that within, in the past two or three months, there's been a lot of incident along that particular area within the city, the Public Health and Safety agreed that we were going to propose a resolution that will give our intention for us as a committee. And then hopefully, if the full council is agreeable with that resolution, that would bind the city, the city of Tom, that would not tolerate nor would condone any racial abuse of our citizens. So that resolution currently is being drafted by the city manager and staff. And it is my understanding that it would come back to the Public Health and Safety Committee for a vote on October 8th, the next available opportunity that we are going to meet as a committee. And hopefully, if we member agree that that resolution meets our need, will we advance that resolution to full council for a vote. That is my report.
Thank you. General Government Committee, councilmember Alt hauser.
Thank you, Mayor. The General Government Committee met this past Wednesday on, or the week prior, on September 11th at 8:00 AM. We had two items on our agenda, both of which were continuations of our journey through the 2025 Comprehensive Plan Periodic Update. We discussed the transportation element, and then we also had a robust discussion on the formatting options that we have for the comp plan. I think, I speak for all three members when we say that we would all love the comp plan to be more accessible by the public, more, more digestible than a tome that is very dense and hard to navigate as an everyday member of the public. And I think that some of the strategies that we're deploying that we discussed at that meeting will really help with that, including having a pretty sizable introduction section where you can see sort of summaries of the goals and the strategies and how we sort of envision the city's future and how we plan to get there. So it was an exciting meeting.
Great, thank you. Next one is the Public Works Committee, councilmember Swarthout.
Thank you, Mayor. Two of the items that were on our council considerations were discussed at the September 4th Public Works Meeting. And we, this meeting, the, on Thursday the 19th is canceled, lack of an agenda, and we're out there paving roads. So I just want to commend their work in tonight on the road out there and how much of it's already getting paved. So go team.
Great. And there was no Budget and Finance Committee meeting since our last meeting. So now we will move to the Mayor's City Administrator Report, and we'll start out with City Administrator Parks.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, councilmembers. I wanted to update you or remind you or put it on your calendar that the Fall Fest is coming up. It's a week from Saturday. It's a week from this coming Saturday on the 28th. It's from 10 to 4 in Brewery Park at Tom Water Falls. There is some interest on the part of our volunteer coordinator to see if the council would be interested in having a certain space set up at this event where you could interact with and be located with, with each other. So people could find you and know who you are and be able to talk to you. And so if you're interested at all in that, I'd ask you to please reach out and I will connect you with, with Brianna, and we can get that figured out. I think that would be a great opportunity for you to have an, to see this event if you haven't already. I believe it's the third year. One of the new things that's happening, I believe, this time is that inner city transit, I believe, has offered to provide some transportation, some shuttle service, because parking is an issue for this event because we have, it's so well attended and there just isn't enough place to park. So more to come on that. And please reach out if you have any interest at all in participating in that event officially. And as we felt this morning, this evening, as we were sitting here, Israel Road is progressing. They are doing nighttime paving as well as working during the day. It is expected that that project will be completed very shortly. The hope is that we will get all the way through striping this year, although it is possible, depending on weather, in any unforeseen circumstances, that we might end up striping in the spring. It's gone very well. They've been very aggressive in trying to get their schedule done, and we're very appreciative of the contractors' efforts. Similarly, Linwood Avenue is progressing as well. It is a couple of weeks, I believe, behind Israel Road. So it is more than likely that we will end up needing to do some of the work and get it finalized in the spring. Other than that, I don't have anything in particular unless you have questions.
One second.
Are we doing the, the event where we do the drop off, the waste? I was thinking about that. It's usually in September. Oh, it's in October. Oh, okay.
I believe so.
Yeah, it's in October.
Okay, thank you.
All right. So part of, so my report is that I, when you volunteer for, in an organization, AWC, I end up getting put on a lot of committees. So I've been tending a multitude of Association of Washington City's committee meetings. I also attended, as well as councilmember Dahlhoff, councilmember Alt hauser, the Extended Funding and Governance Group at, with the Squawson Tribe at Little Creek Hotel. And so that was really good for that, having that open house and having a lot of dialogue, meeting with everyone. The, the mayors meet every month. And one of the things that was presented at this last mayor's meeting is the World Cup Soccer is coming in 2026, and FIFA is looking for some other areas to host. And so it's possible that Lacey, Olympia, Tom Water, being halfway between Olympia or between Seattle and Portland, may be on the schedule for doing some events like watch parties and other things. So that's possible. We will hear more about that if that comes to reality later on in the year. But that would be very exciting with this huge event that's going to be happening. And then I also attended the Artisan Group, which is an architectural firm on Capitol Boulevard. As you notice that they're building, they're constructing, they're expanding their office building. And then they are also going three stories high where they will have six apartments. So this is a prefabbed, state of the art, high, low energy building that will have six apartments. So this will be a great opportunity for different kind of building process and something that's very energy efficient. So everybody will be seeing that being completed here in the not too distant future. And again, I also wanted to remind everyone the Fall Fest on September 28th at Brewery Park. And that is my report. So with that, I will go to council member reports. And I guess I will start with councilmember Von Holtz. I will start with you.
Thank you, Mayor. September 4th, I attended as interim, Inner City Transit Authority. And as part of my day job, they announced that they're bringing back the late bus to the Evergreen State College. So that's exciting for students. And also, they did a really cool, they're doing a pilot project, and it's for people who have sight impairment. And it's called Novelands. And it guides people, they have it in New York, and it guides people to the transit center or bus stops. And so it, it gives them the route, it gives them the times. It's, it's really cool. So I was really excited to get to learn more about that. And I guess, oh, since we didn't have our work session, I was able to attend the Niskali Land Trust event that honored former Senator Karen Fraser. And that was a really nice event. So Tom Water was represented. And my husband, unbeknownst to me, has signed up for, it's for veterans. And it's, it's, they learn about golf, which he already knows. It's just an excuse for him to do golf. But also, it's, it's to build camaraderie amongst veterans, some of which have PTSD. And so he's been going to that. And that's right in Tom Water, over by McConie's. And I had no idea. So lots of cool stuff happening in our community.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Jefferson.
Yes, Mayor, I will need about 15 minutes of your time. No. This, we're going to have the medicine take back this October. It's going to be five October from nine to 12 for T-Hopes. They had asked for volunteers, and it's hard to get volunteers these days. And I'm building on something. So stay with me. So it's going to be the Tom Water cleanup drop off event. The event includes medication disposal, shredding, and recycling services, which is free. The food bank will be in attendance as well. And we will be there to provide those medication lock boxes and also resources. On the 12th of September, we had the T-Hopes meeting where we discussed the overview for the last year. And it was minimal because you know that we had to hire our, our manager for that. So we decided that we were going to purchase screenagers, a total of $1,500, and we're going to show it throughout the year. and we're going to show it throughout the year. We discussed Drug Prevention Summit that two of us have to go to at the Weston Hotel in Seattle, that will be the 30th to the 31st of October, and had a discussion on how can we get teens engaged to help us grow? Because we need those young people. I'm getting us somewhere. They're, they're most likely to listen to their peers about drugs and alcohol instead of me, you know, sitting there telling them, don't do drugs and alcohol. So those teens and those younger adults are most likely to drive that message. So how can we get them engaged? So last week, I met with Chris Sieg, the new director of, at the school district, for career and technical education, to ask him how we can partner. So I was so excited about where they opened Tomwater Works. I just had to engage him to see, hey, how can we partner together? So here's the good thing. He develops workplace learning programs. So how can we partner together as a city to get these teens involved with us here at City Hall? So he and I can envision these teens forming a youth committee for us and getting credit. Our racial equity committee, can they be involved with that? Do we have work for them here filing, you know, admin work that we can use these teens to, to do that type of work for us? So bottom line, he's ready, the council is ready. We have an event, City Administrator. We're going to need Brittany to announce, publish a meeting this Saturday at 08:30. All four of us here are going to be at Black Hills High School to start engaging and partnering with Chris Sieg and our school district because we want to make this work. So how can we make it work? Can the volunteer coordinator have something to do with this? Because I'm thinking it's minimal funding, so it's just a matter of organization. So can we make it happen, Mayor? Can we make it happen, City Administrator? All right, I like that. Okay, so let me move on to today. I met with the Olympian Beyond at 3:30. And our annual meeting is this Thursday into 9:00 at 5:00 p.m. I will attend. And we voted in two new board members. And that is my report. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Dahlhoff.
Thank you, Mayor. That was a great report, Angela. That's good. September 4th, I had, I was able to attend the Emergency Coordination Center Workshop, which they're going to have multiple throughout the year. So I'm assuming some other council members will get invited, where they give you some scenarios and you go over some examples of how information management, interoperable communications, resource management, strategic planning, multi-aging coordination, and policy direction, and a ton of flow charts. How that all comes together and how Tomwater would respond on all the factors and all the threads and schools and healthcare, how it all comes together. So that was really interesting. Also had Thurston County 911 Communications. And the fun fact for this month is for the month of July, there were 33,667 calls in Thurston County. I don't know if any of you actually care right now, but I thought it was fascinating. Thank you for asking, Eileen. In comparison, 2023, it's actually down by 15%. Thank you, thank you. I'll keep it going every month. Also had Thurston County Opoid Response Task Force. And super exciting, for example, of pilots, which I'm a big fan of, right? To test Plan D, check Act, and circle back, is partnering with EMS Fire for locking medication bags, leave behind. So we've heard from our fire and EMS, when they've gone to some incidences, right? There's other things that they noticed, right? Seniors that are isolated, who really don't have an emergency but need help, right? And then they see all these medications laid out. So they're going to do a pilot where they actually leave behind medication bags to lock their meds. And we're going to track that, which I think is super cool. So that was with Thurston County Opoid Response Task Force. Lot, which is Lacey Olympia Tomwater, Thurston County Clean Water Alliance, had a meeting last week. And the summary is Lot is also a part of the Deschutes Estuary Project with the city of Tomwater, Olympia, and the port and the marinas. So DES came and the consultants and talked about what's happening and how Lot is involved. Also, we are doing the budget with Lot. So budget time of the year, super exciting. And Lot's going to be doing some pilots as well, which I'm a big fan of. And we heard about upcoming changes to Lot's pre-treatment ordinances, which no one really cares again. But it's very exciting, so more information to come. And that's my update.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Althausser.
Thank you, Mayor. As you stated, I attended the Funding Governance Work Group meeting for the Deschutes Estuary at the Squawson Island Hotel. And that was a really great meeting. Happy to have an opportunity to attend and be in community, talking about such an important project for our future. And we'll learn a lot more about it as a group at our next work session, when there will be a presentation about the ILA that we're embarking on. And for the Regional Housing Council, we have not met since our last council meeting, but we do meet a week from tomorrow. So I will have a full report about that meeting at our next council meeting. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Sortha.
Thank you, Mayor. On September 6th, I attended the Thurston Regional Planning Council Meeting. We covered a couple of items, the RTIP, everything's acronym. So it's the Regional Transportation Improvement Program Annual Update. So it relates to the funding for transportation projects in our area. The most notable thing that we discussed was there, there's an assessment that there, I passed along to Administrator Parks, the potential of increase in our assessments, the local. The TRPC is finding that they need to raise some funds as far as addressing their technology, information technology, infrastructure funds that they don't really have fund for. And so they are looking at going to the jurisdictions and have proposed a 14% increase in our fees. So I passed that along. So just, that was the most notable thing that came up at the meeting, and that's my report.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Agabi.
Thank you, Mayor. So on the night, I attended the JSCOM Joint Animal Services Meeting. And at the meeting, which was very, very lively, we discussed, we presented three main items. So they talked about the volunteer program update at the center. And thus far, up to date, JSCOM volunteers have provided close to almost 40 hours, which would be the equivalent of one, more than 40 hours, the equivalent of a front-office FTE. And some of those volunteers actually volunteered three or four times a week. So that is very, very commendable. And then there, we were giving a presentation of food services. And the food services was very, very, very interesting. There was a case of somewhere within the county where somebody had been running a cockfighting business within the county. And the county had to go in there and take those birds from him. And because of, because there is no specific animal currently law that measures cockfighting, so it's essentially going to be a repeat offender. So for example, there's animal fighting statute that talk about animal cruelty, first-degree statute that measure horses and bigger animals. And there's the animal cruelty second-degree statute that also measures some of the animals, but not cocks or smaller birds per se. And this particular person or individual is a repeat offender within Western Washington and Eastern Washington. And so the discussion is, what does the state need to do to farm up its statute? Because apparently, the statute that is currently in the books, were put in the books way back when, when this kind of activities was not necessarily common. So we talked about that and I don't know how that is going to be tackled. And then the third presentation was about 2025 judicial assessment estimates. For Tomwater, we would be, we would be assessed when it's finalized, plus or minus $190,000 for 2025. So that is for JSCOM. On, oops. Excuse me here, I closed my screen. On, on the 10th, on the 11th, I attended the Transportation Board Meeting that went on and on and on and on and on. So the Transportation Board Meeting, big item, was call for projects. So within Tomwater, we have two main projects that we have submitted for potential funding this time around. And that is the trails starting from Pioneer Park towards, goes to 2th Street and sneaking around that Buery District area. And then the second one is a transportation study for around Lurk Road, coming towards the new runabout on Capitol Boulevard. So for those two projects, they were, they were close to, I believe, I didn't count them, but it went on and on and on for a very long time. I would say, guessing about 20 or 25 projects. There, there is a formula of how those projects are going to be assigned, passing mark that would meet funding requirement. And that, if you ask me, I can't really tell you because this meeting went on forever and ever and ever. But this is just the initial, the initial stage. There's going to be more, more, more coming down the back on how everything is going to shake out. But this is just what, what they're looking to fund. And then the next, the next item on the agenda was Comprehensive Plan Review for, yeah, for this time around. And then we also discuss congestion management process and legislative priorities. But in focus, totally in focus, the main, the main, the main object of the meeting was call for projects, which is, which was a big one. So hopefully, Tomwater will, will shake out how to offer a project funded. So Mary Heather Hames was the one that was, that was representing, staffed representing Tomwater. But now she's gone, Brandon has taken over from Mary Heather Hames. And now I am hoping that we, we wouldn't miss out or we wouldn't, yeah, that we, we won't miss anything. So I leave it at that. That is my, that's my spiel.
Great, thank you, Councilmember Agabi. Councilmember Kathy.
Thank you, Mayor. Since Councilmember Jefferson took 15 minutes and then Councilmember Dahlhoff said halfway through these reports, nobody cared or was listening, I thought I'd be very brief. And so I, I had two meetings. One was Solid Waste Advisory Council, and, well, actually, three. Michael thought that an 8 o'clock meeting is exciting for general government. And when I finally came around, I, I got into the excitement. And, and then I had an Olympia Region Clean Air Agency meeting on that same day. I wanted to make one comment about Solid Waste Advisory Council. Some of us old-timers on there are very excited that we have geared up again the outreach for the solid waste in, especially in some of the areas of, that is reaching out to schools and for everything from, you know, recycle to reuse to, you know, food. And not, not just composting, but growing. And so there's some garden work going on, and some of that is tied together with the Washington State Extension Program. It helps with the community gardens and so forth. So this is a real good thing because for several years, this outreach arm of the Solid Waste Advisory was not as active. So we were pleased to hear that that's happening. And they made a big presentation, which leads me to say that after the first of the year, probably would be the best time for us with our schedule. I'd like to have someone from SWAC come and, and tell us a little bit about what's going on with this particular program. So that is my report.
Great, thank you. So I believe we have no other business this evening. And with that, I will adjourn our meeting. Thank you, everyone.